We'll go ahead and call to order the Thursday, February 13th, 2020, meeting of the Clive City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Sirksina.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
All present in the county for Susan, nice to have you with us.
Thank you.
Great to see everybody. If you would please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Next item is approval of the agenda. We have one correction that needs to be made under action item 1C, and that is the resolution awarding contract to Mainline Construction in the amount of $2,764,373.35 is the correct amount that should be in there. And that's all been publicized, and I think Mr. Hagley will speak to that when he comes to that on the agenda, correct, Matthew?
Yes. Move approval of the corrected agenda.
Thank you. Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, agenda is approved. Next item is citizens' presentation. This is where anyone in the chambers can address the council on an item that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody here to do so? Seeing none, we're going to move to consent items.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero. Okay, the next item is, we have, well, we have two presentations this evening. The first is the introduction of Julie Jolly, accounting specialist. And Joyce, I think you're going to handle that for us.
To be honest, if you want to come up, Julie. So, we welcome to our team this week Julie Jolly. She's our new accounting specialist to the team. She comes to us from the city of Otanwa, and she's got 19 years of experience with them. So she comes with municipal background and experience in payroll and accounting and administration support. So, we're excited to have her.
Julie, welcome. Great to have you on the team.
Hello, and yes, I'm glad to be here. So, I look forward to working with all of you.
As we do with you. So, if we can be helpful, just let us know. You've got a great team to be a part of.
I agree.
Again, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Joyce. Okay, the next introduction is of Jason Glazza, firefighter EMT, and Chief Rowe is going to do that for us.
It is my pleasure. This is Jason. Jason's got a lot of experience he brings to us. He's replacing somebody that left us a couple months ago. With some of Jason's background, he's been part-time at Johnston Grimes. He's been a firefighter EMT at Minburne for a number of years. He's a skills instructor at DMAC, a former schoolteacher at Waukees, has a master's in education and leadership through Concordia, and a bachelor of arts from a UNI. And he's about halfway through his paramedic school, so when he's not working for Clive, he's usually in class or doing clinicals and those kind of things, so it's great.
Got a lot of spare time for this young man.
Not at the moment. Pretty busy schedule. But I'm honored to be here. I can think of no greater city to work for than Clive. I have moved on and passed up other opportunities because Clive is really where I wanted to be. Amazing, amazing staff, amazing leadership. Honored to be a part of this department in the city.
Well, Jason, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team. Look forward to working with you, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
And are going to do for us. So, great, thank you. Okay, we'll move to action items now. The first item is a public hearing for Clark Street reconstruction, phase one. There's three items there, and we have Jim to discuss this tonight. Jim? Yes, Matthew, did we publish appropriate public notice?
Yes, for all three public hearings, it was published January 29th, 2020, in the Dubois Register.
Good, thank you, Matthew. Okay, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. We received bids last week for this year's project on Clark Street. As you're aware, we'll be reconstructing Clark Street between 105th and 103rd Street, and 104th Street between University and Clark Street. Received four bids. You have a breakdown in your packet. Mainline Construction was red low at the $2.764 million amount that was referenced earlier. A little history on Mainline, because right now, there is just a little history on them. They are a newly formed company, so we obviously have not worked with them in the past. We reached out and talked with them, talked through their process and brief history. The owner has worked for, been asked for the past five years. We reached out to those folks as well, got good favorable reviews from them as well. Also, as referenced in my memo, there's a family affiliation with an underground company in the Iowa City, Cedar Rapids area. So if necessary, there's the possibility for manpower and equipment to be swapped. Brady Carter, the owner, is actually here tonight if you have any specific questions for him. But after we did our due diligence, we don't have any reservations moving forward and would recommend award to Mainline Construction. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jim. Council questions, Eric?
Jim, that bid is about $400,000 less than the next lowest bid, which is absolute. I know we've done a lot of bids with. Why such a disparity, disparity in those numbers?
Again, it's a competitive bid situation. Everyone's looking at it from a different aspect. I mean, there is a lot of crossover, if you kind of dive into that, between subcontractors and the same unit prices you'll see show up there. Again, I'm not going to complain about the estimate coming in a little bit lower than our engineer's estimate. And again, I can't point to a specific question on why the difference there.
Just wonder if there's something out there that...
In looking through that, there's nothing that jumps out as far as looking at individual unit prices. I mean, there's some variations throughout, but it kind of compensates.
That's what I'm getting at right there.
Yeah, no.
Other questions, council?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric to close the public hearing. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution approving plans and specs.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero.
Move to receive the bids.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Been there somewhere.
Is it too cold? Frozen?
That passes five to zero.
Move the resolution awarding the contract to Mainline Construction in the amount of the bid, $2,764,372.35.
Move by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion, Ted?
I just want to ask a quick question. Jim, do we have a hard start date, or is it just like when the weather breaks, or?
Sure. It'll be, well, we'll have some preliminary meetings and kind of try to decide is it going to be weather-dependent this spring. There's a completion date of, a substantial completion date of November 1st, and then a full completion date of December 1st. So not a definite start date, but we'll be kind of trying to set that up here in the next few weeks if we can.
Susan, anything? Any discussion?
No, thanks for asking.
Okay, seeing none, will the council please vote?
Let's call, voice vote on this because it's not updating. Weaver?
Yes.
McCoy?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Judkins?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes five to zero. Jim, thank you.
Mayor, if I might, just for clarification, this work that will be done with a substantial completion date in November, there will obviously be ongoing planting work, things that can't be done when it gets that cold. So, there'll be some constructibility questions that we'll need to address in that time. But we do anticipate that as we go into the following year, there will be quite a bit of that ongoing planting-type work, especially with the bio cells and some of the other stormwater work we're anticipating doing.
Thanks, Pete. Eric?
Pete, real quick, communication plan to the residents there on construction timelines and what to expect, I would imagine?
Yep, Jim and I will be working very closely together on all of that and have been already reaching out to some of the neighbors, especially on Clark Street. That work continues. We wanted to make sure we actually got to this point with bids awarded and had some clarity. And so we'll really be ramping that up as we get closer to the start of the work. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you, Pete. Appreciate the updates and clarification there. With that, we'll move to item two, which is Shadow Creek North rezoning, and we have the publication date on this. Amanda?
Mayor, council, thank you. At the dot cam. So tonight, we are having the public hearing for what are actually two separate rezoning applications, but under one master concept plan. So this is the Shadow Creek North area. So as we are now ready to build the bridge to cross Little Walnut Creek with the rest of our Shadow Creek development, we're opening up that mile section there for development, which is very exciting. And right now, the land is zoned R1. That's the default zoning it would come into the city with. So the developers are requesting a rezoning to PUD. That allows them to continue the parkway standards throughout, incorporate some of the green belt, regional detention, and then get some mixed residential and commercial at the corner closer to Meredith and Warrior there at the hard corner. So as I said, there are two applications. You actually have two ordinances to consider tonight, two public hearings, so it'll be two actions from you guys, just to clarify. So with the plan, you'll see Westgate will be extended up to Meredith, likely in two phases. And then also, in the first phase, we'll have connection out to Warrior. And that will be, the first couple phases will be the development of the single-family that you're seeing in the pink and yellow area there. The pink and yellow relate to the minimum lot widths for those areas. The yellow is 70 feet, the pink is 80 feet. We have received the first draft of the preliminary plat on that, and it is consistent with what you're seeing here. So the phase line is a little harder to see on the dot cam, but it's the dashed line that kind of runs this way. So the bulk of the area, it's 177 acres approximately, and the bulk of that area is dedicated to the single-family development. These lots and homes are going to be very similar in quality to what we've seen in the other Shadow Creek developments. The mixed residential up here in the green area, the layout you're seeing is more proof of concept for what could be developed in that area, and that will be more responsive to the market several years from now when we're actually constructing in that portion. So you're seeing townhomes, single-family, and possible apartments all in that area. The limitation on that would be a maximum unit number of 450 units developed in that area is what staff is proposing at this time. We think that's a pretty reasonable number based on the overall densities that that would allow. It would still allow for the apartment developments at the higher density, but the average density across that area would be closer to 10 or 10 and 1/2 acres per unit with that total dwelling count. So it's a good-sized area there that could allow some diversity and variety in housing types. The commercial area at the corner right here is intended to be really serving the neighborhood. So we're looking at restricting, you know, not allowing like a gas station or a heavy user standalone drive-through fast food like a McDonald's. It would be more smaller businesses, office, strip center with a variety of uses in it potentially. There's also the opportunity there for that to be mixed use and incorporate some residential in that area, just responding to the market as we get out to that point. Again, that's multiple years down the road by the time we do all the single-family development and get those public improvements put in. So again, the parkway requirements and the design standards are going to continue through. Staff is recommending on the single-family that we continue the architectural review committee that was set up with Shadow Creek Plat 4. Your packet has some detail on that for kind of justifying it, along with some pictures of other homes that have been built in Shadow Creek 4. Staff's been really happy with the quality that they've been approving, and the development agreement would still lay out some kind of minimum material types, but not dictating the percentages like some of our previous developments have. So we've been really happy with how that's been working. We'd like to continue that relationship with the same development team that has been doing Shadow Creek 4. Additionally, the green belt will be extended through here. We've recently acquired from the owners 4.98 acres in this area that was incorporated into the green belt. It is not included in the rezoning or the plat. That's just, we purchased that with REIT funding, but that is going to be an extension of the green belt in that area. And then the trail will be ultimately constructed by the city, but the, excuse me, grading of the site will largely be done by the developers. They're preparing the plat, so we'll just have to come in and lay the asphalt at the time we're ready to do that. You can see trail connections coming into the development in multiple locations, so people can get access to the green belt. And the stormwater is being largely handled in those areas as well to be incorporated as more of an amenity to the sites. We found through our housing research that we've done here that those kinds of amenities can increase the value of the adjacent properties, and also for the long-term success of those facilities. We feel it's appropriate for the city to help with managing and maintaining those long-term. And additionally, we anticipate similar cost share with some of those improvements, such as the sidewalk recreation trail along Westgate that we've seen in the previous iterations of the development, and then also sharing costs with the decorative streetlights, some of those kinds of features. So a couple things that you guys could weigh in on tonight for us as we're working on the development agreement. Generally, if you're comfortable continuing the architectural review committee, another item we're looking at is kind of simplifying the minimum square footages of the homes required in that development agreement. The previous Shadow Creek 4 had a tiered approach, but none of the homes at this point that have been permitted are at the minimums. We feel it will give the developer more flexibility as they're working through on the covenants and the final plating of it to kind of assign those areas in response to the market for where they might want to mandate larger homes in those minimums, similar to what we've done previously, but just allowing them to do it a little further down the road. And then we're also looking at removing the coach light requirement for the parkway, which was the individual lights on the single-family properties that had the service sidewalk. That's been a complaint we've heard numerous times from a lot of the developers here, that it's been kind of a pain. So we're trying to be responsive to what we're hearing from the development community in that area, that they would prefer we not require that. And we've looked at where we've done it along Berkshire and found that a lot of the design isn't very consistent across the lights that are installed, so we would feel comfortable removing that requirement going forward for Westgate.
What if it's recess lighting then?
Mm-hmm, sorry?
Maybe recess lighting instead of?
So most of the homes are still going to have lighting on the house. This was just an additional, I guess, kind of pedestrian-oriented design feature that was added. But we still...
The light at the end of the walk in front of the house.
Yeah, the short, short ones. So it would still have the decorative streetlights that also help that pedestrian scale. So this would just remove the private side requirement for it. And one other item, the developer has expressed an interest in possibly using a smaller townhome square footage than what our R4 zoning requires. So they're looking at going down to 1,150 square feet instead of the 1,250 square feet that is the base requirement for R4. We do have in Clive some townhome-style developments that were in R3 zoning districts that don't have that minimum square footage, that have been built a bit smaller than that 1,250, that have been pretty successful. So I'll let them discuss that more if they have anything to add to that tonight. But we do have Ryan with CDA and Dave with Vista here, if you guys have any questions.
Council, questions to start?
I do on the stormwater, and I think you probably anticipated it, but again, I'm not real warm on the idea of the joint stormwater detention. I understand the use by, quote, "the public," but as it's situated, there's not a, I'm not sure what's on the left side of that pond on the west. But again, this is a new model that we've been breaking into, and it does just for the record make me nervous. You're putting the stormwater on the city where in the past, all of the projects have been on the developer, and rightfully so, or the landowner, right? And we're now transferring this permanently to the city forever, which again puts the cost of this project and the other projects we've approved this with to all of the homeowners across the entire city, regardless if you live out there or not. And I'm just not comfortable with that model at this point. We're finishing off here of the city, and I get it, we did it in the last ones, and so I probably won't get anywhere on this one either, but I just don't think it's the right model for us at this point.
Susan, anything on any of the items that were brought up for discussion?
The only thing that really raised a question for me was the reference to the commercial portion, and, you know, there wouldn't be anything like a McDonald's, but I just wonder how we specify customers or expectations of number of cars coming through.
Sure. So we can't, you know, it could be a small local type coffee shop, like a Friedrichs could go in, or you could end up with a Starbucks, potentially even in a strip center environment. So you're right, we wouldn't be able to necessarily dictate a maximum number of cars that could come. What we can do is limit the ultimate uses and the development pattern that would go in there. So, you know, for instance, we know gas stations are going to be a high-intensity use, so we're not, we're going to list that as a not-allowed use in that area. There certainly could be some very popular uses that are up there that would have a lot of people coming to it. That is always a possibility, not necessarily a bad thing, especially if it's surrounded by more of the multifamily and those uses where you would have more patrons available easily to come enjoy it without having all the vehicle traffic.
So you had four things, right? The review committee, the coach light, the minimum square footage on the townhomes, and what was the other one that I didn't get the note down quick enough on, that you wanted our feedback on? There's a minimum square footage of something.
I think, yeah, it was the minimum square footage on the townhomes, if the developer would like to go below that 1,250 number, if you guys want us to continue exploring that with them, or if you have questions regarding that. I think those were the three items that I can remember.
Seems to make sense to continue the review committee if that's worked and if staff appreciates that and that adds value to the process. Counsel, I think that probably something we continue. The coach light, I will tell you, is having one of them. It's just one more thing you got to maintain in front of your house.
Yep.
In fact, mine doesn't even work, for the record.
[laughing]
So, yeah, so at least it doesn't work right now.
I'll have Mark send you a letter on Monday, so.
I look forward to that. Glad I could bring that on. So I guess, I guess I'm okay with that. The square footage reduction, I'm interested in the 50 square footage reduction on the townhomes. And Dave, you're smiling, and if you want to come forward, or your partners come forward and maybe talk to us about that a little bit.
Yeah, sure.
About the rationale there. Nice to see you, Dave, and...
See you.
You know, I get out there about every weekend, and it's really coming together well. So excited for this next, this next phase.
Yeah, we're pleased with it. Dave Harmeyer, Vista Real Estate, 2400, 86th Street, Urbandale. We're pleased with it as well. We've kind of had a lot of reservations going in when we brought our first couple plats through, and I think we've gained a lot of trust in working through the staff, and I think they have with us. So I think that whole process has worked really well. With regards to the square footage, we don't build vertically. So, and what we're really trying to do up in that northwest corner is disclose to all the single-family residents in our next plats, which is Plats 5 and 6, and then we'll have 7 and 8. So we're probably five, seven, maybe 10 years before we get up there. But what we want to do is zone that area so everybody knows what's possible. That's one of the biggest things we face as a company is, you know, we didn't know about that. We didn't know it was going to be townhomes. We didn't know there's possibly apartments or commercials. So that's why we wanted to go that, to that level. But it's really hard to, to show you guys exactly what could happen. But what we, we do want to look at, which is up more into the northwest corner, was potentially some row housing, more affordable housing for people, and we can make the designs nice and all those things. And from all the other, from all the people that we talked to that do that sort of development, the 1,250 was a pretty high number to do that. So we asked, we asked them what they, what they would recommend, and they said 1,150. So that's how we got to the number. It wasn't anything we've ever brought as a product to town. It's just a input from them, and we still have to bring it in, show all the architectural designs and everything when we, when we bring forward that phase of the PUD to you to say, this is acceptable. We have to think it's acceptable, because we have more ground down Warrior Lane to the south, too, that we envision even hot, maybe possibly even higher-end houses. So we're going to want to protect it as well as you guys are. But that, that's how it came, came to pass.
Counsel, questions on this point?
Are those one-story townhouses you're thinking then, or?
No, those would be, those would be multiple-story. Those would be two-story, possibly three.
Do they have basements, do you think?
Well, the row typically has. If it goes that way, it would, it would typically be a garage with two above. What we envision next to the, the single-family there is more of a ranch design, kind of like the Epcon-type facility. We're actually in talks with them about doing something there. So it would be probably up against the apartments if they're, if they're, it were to materialize and we had apartments up in that corner. So we're not really married to the commercial either. We just think it, it's wise to have that ability to have some place for someone to go on that corner. But I could see that turning to multifamily at some point as well. But it's kind of a step up, I would see how you go from single, two-story up to maybe three-story in apartments. And so the row would allow us to transition up into the apartments.
Other, other questions or comments?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric to close the public hearing. Before we do that, anybody else to speak on this item? Seeing none, will the council please vote? And thank you, Dave, for your comments. Passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move to ordinance number 1087, be considered by the council, voted for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero.
Now I'd move that ordinance number 1088, having been considered by the council, be voted for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero as well. Thank you, Amanda. Okay, the third item of the third public hearing is proposed city maximum property dollars. Matt?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a new feature to the budget process this year following legislation that was passed by the state legislature in 2019. And this is for when cities are considering a budget that would exceed a 2% property tax revenue threshold. Going above that number requires this additional public hearing and consideration of a resolution to do that. As we've talked about through the budget process the, the last couple of months, due to the growth of the community and some ongoing relationships that we're developing with the city of Urbandale related to public safety, there's significant investments being proposed in this budget related to additional police officer positions, building inspector position, a right-of-way specialist in public works, and then also the ongoing relationship that is developing as Station 43 comes online here in the next month with the city of Urbandale to provide fire and EMS coverage to the far western portion of the Clive community. The financial relationship there will start ramping up as additional staff are brought online by the city of Urbandale, with the city of Clive compensating them online by the city of Urbandale, with the city of Clive compensating them 40% of those total costs for the operating expenses of that facility. With those growth in expenses, then we would be proposing to exceed that 2% cap and needing that additional revenue of, with the same property tax rate of 1014 that the council has had for a number of years being utilized. So that is kind of what is represented in the public hearing notice documents that, one thing that's unique in this one in terms of the, the regular published notice that we do, another requirement of the law here is to also have a number of social media posts on all of the city's mediums that we have, and that we also have complied with that as a portion of the, the new law requirements. So with that, be happy to answer any questions, but staff would definitely recommend consideration of the resolution. And a reminder, too, with this specific resolution, as worded in the law, looking to exceed the 2% would require a supermajority vote for passage of that resolution.
Thanks, Matt. Questions for Matt? Eric?
Matt, what is the actual percentage of the growth threshold?
In terms of what for the, what, what our budget would be going up? 7.9%.
The threshold is 2% in the code.
Correct.
I move to close public hearing.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Before we do, is there anybody here to speak on this item? Saying none, will the council please vote? Passes five to zero to close the public hearing.
Move the resolution approving fiscal year 2021 maximum property tax dollars.
Second. Moved by John, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Saying none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Okay, item four is a resolution setting public hearing for March 12, 2020 at 6:00 PM regarding the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Matt?
Following the process that you just went through, now you can be ready to set the public hearing for the normal consideration and adoption of the FY 2021 budget, on the normal timeframe that you're used to in terms of the normal process. So now, following the approval of the resolution, now we move back to the regular process, and so we would request that you set the public hearing and then the requirement of the approval of the budget by the end of March.
I'll move. Second.
Moved by Michael, seconded by John. Further discussion? Saying none, will the council please vote? That item passes five to zero. Thanks, Matt. Okay, item five, Come and Go, 1559 Hickman Road. Amanda?
So tonight we have consideration of a site plan, a public facility sign, and a supplemental agreement for Come and Go. So they're proposing to build an approximately 5,600 square foot store at the corner of Hickman Road and 156th. There is a main customer entry here, across from the gas pumps, which should be, you know, pretty typical, and then there's a secondary customer entry here as well. The development kind of shown here in the lighter gray to the south is just more of a proof of concept at this point. We have received the plat in addition to this that will divide this off into a separate developable lot. So this is just showing you could do, you know, around a 3,000 square foot small retail or office type use to get some additional value out of the land there, showing that it fits on the site, but none of that is actually being approved tonight, aside from the stormwater that is included on the property there.
And I don't know anything about, is that marketable? I mean, I just ignorance on the real estate piece, is that?
Yeah.
A marketable?
They are here tonight, so they can speak to that some, but yeah, we, we believe that it would be able to be something that could be leased or used as a, like I said, office, chiropractor, you know, small, smaller kind of use like that would work on, on a site like that, and they can fit the parking and landscaping and all the requirements there.
Probably about the size of the Come and Go facility now.
Yeah, the one across the street.
Really?
Probably about that size, huh? Yeah. The elevations are in keeping with our masonry requirements. You can see they're using a mix of brown, white, and gray largely, and then they have some of the red ACM accents where they're pulling in more of their Come and Go branding there. We did have some concerns initially with the fuel canopy materials they were proposing, but we've discussed that with Come and Go, and it appeared to be some installation issues at some of their other sites in the metro, and they've informed us they're no longer working with that contractor. So we think that that will be fine moving forward. Their more recent installations in West Des Moines did appear to address those quality issues that we'd originally cited in some of the comment letters in review that is included in your packet. The landscaping on site is in compliance for both the main lots with the Come and Go and for the future subdivision. It also includes some enhanced landscaping around the location that will be the public facility sign, and then some additional landscaping in the buffer that's just off this page down here to the residential property further to the south. There are no changes in access for the sites, so they're coming in just off the existing drives for the Nebraska Furniture Mart property, so we're not anticipating anything to change there. Primarily coming here, there's the access easement, or the other driveway is approximately there coming through.
That's not one-way anymore, is it?
Uh, no.
Yeah.
They're not one-way, nope.
It used to be, many months ago. And people, of course, abided by that.
Absolutely, always. The stormwater is largely being handled off-site on that detention that I had pointed out earlier, or will be off-site once it is divided and that other area is open for development. And the park and ride, the Dart Park and Ride that currently operates on the Nebraska Furniture Mart site will continue to operate there. No changes are being proposed. We did reach out to Louis Montoya with Dart, and he didn't ask for any enhancements to be made on the sites, and he was comfortable with what they were proposing here for continuing the use. So that was my notes on the site plan. If you guys don't have any specific questions, I can move on to talk about the public facility sign, but I'll pause there for a minute.
Questions for Amanda?
Amanda, in other Come and Go projects, they've incorporated public artwork into their facilities. 86th Street would be one, Grand Prairie Parkway is now there. Is there any incorporation of public art in this particular facility?
There's not any public arts, aside from the public facility sign, if you want to interpret that as art.
I don't.
I wouldn't, but, no, so they're not.
It's very nice, though, let's.
Yes, so no, they're, they're not incorporating the public art. The amber sand sign that a lot of the Come and Go's feature in our ordinance would be considered a sign and does not meet the design standards, so it has not been included on the site.
Why is that?
In order for them to do it, they would either have to get a variance or redesign the sign to such an extent that it is like a sign with the brick columns around, so it's just what the ordinance would require today. It's interpreted as a sign because it, it is their logo, and that would be consistent with other interpretations we've had for other signage in the community.
Being that we have representatives from Come and Go that are here, would you please come forward? It doesn't have to be all of you, it could be just one of you. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Andreessen from Come and Go, 1459 Grand Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa.
Brittany?
Keith Wagon with CDA, 3405 Southeast Crossroads Drive, Suite G, Grimes.
Councilmember Klein brings up a really interesting point about public art in the facility, and, you know, it made such a difference, I think, for our 86th Street store. It'd really be nice to somehow find a way to incorporate public art into the site. Don't know what you have to do, don't know if it's even a possibility, but I think it's a really good point to bring up, and I think the Krauses have been supportive of that, of that type of, of direction in recent developments. So it'd be nice to see if we could plug something in here. Don't know what kind of conversations you have to have, but I just want to get that on the record. Great-looking facility, great-looking plan, glad to have it, but public art would be nice.
Sure, absolutely.
That's the only comment I have.
Yeah, and maybe, again, with that, and I think that Sharon Kraus has actually chose some of the pieces for Grand Prairie Parkway and 86th, if they're not, it really enhanced the facility right there. It's not a game changer for me, I get it, it's a great, it's a great plan right here, but it really does enhance it. It brings a lot to what I thought, just the visual and the aesthetic of what it looks like, really sets it apart from maybe your competition right there, and, and also in kind of the spirit with Clive and how we do things, I think it'd be a really nice addition.
Just a point, just a point to bring up. Susan, do you have anything to bring up while we have our friends from Come and Go here?
No, I do not.
Counsel, any other questions for Amanda before she moves on to her next portion of?
What's going to happen with the existing facility? What's, what are the plans for that?
Siobhan Harmon with Come and Go. I'm the real estate development manager for this project, so our existing store is on a lease, and it'll be vacant for a time being, and then it will revert back to the landlord.
And then they just decide, or they're just going to mark it?
Yeah, they'll decide what to do with it after that. I think we have, I think by the time the store is built, we have like 18 months left on the lease or something like that, so we'll, we'll pull all the tanks and put it back to where it was existing.
And just out of curiosity, why are you moving from one side of the road to the other?
Okay, this has been a.
That was my next question.
Well, this has been a really long project.
Yes.
The mayor is cringing.
No, it's all good.
Watching Siobhan very closely, his new project, so.
Siobhan, let's be clear, you've all worked very hard to try to get to this point, so.
We, we have, but you know, we, so we had our existing store, and the access over there is just not the greatest. So you have the retail sign that's behind, and then some other buildings have been added in the meantime. So if you're on 156th Street, you have a right-in, right-out, but to get to the full, you have to go up to the next access point. If you're going to try to get back on Hickman, you have to go through the entire development to get back onto Hickman.
It's very painful.
It's very painful. So on top of it, we have a prototype there that's called The Legacy, which is about a 3,800 square foot store. As the C-store industry and business has progressed, we are spending more time on fresh food and the inside of the store than we are on the outside. Gallons, you know, selling gas gallons has gone down over time, cars are more energy-efficient, fuel-efficient, you know, like even the Ford F-150 truck has gotten dramatically more efficient, you know, in the last 10 years. And then, you know, the other thing is, people just aren't driving as much, they're using more public transportation, rideshare, bicycles, you know, et cetera. So convenience stores are just spending more time on the inside of the store. We're looking to be more healthy and add healthier options. So our store's gone from 3,800 square feet, we had a 5,000 square foot model, which is the one that's up on 86th Street, now we're at 5,400 square feet. With all that said, we can't rebuild in the current location without taking down a portion of the strip center behind us, which screws up the access for everybody in the rest of the center. So then we went ahead and we bought the other corner, which, which, you know, we, we brought that through, we got approval on that, but you know, at the end of the day, it really is undevelopable because, you know, we have been unable to come to agreement on a development plan for the five houses that are behind. They want a lot of money, and you know, we're into that corner right now for over $2 million. So we're, you know, we're not in a position that we're going to go into it for another million. So we're walking away from that corner, we own it, we're maintaining it, but we're walking away. So then the Nebraska Furniture Mart piece came up, and you know, it makes perfect sense for us from an access standpoint, that, you know, they had the site pad ready for us, so it was very economical. And as an aside, Kyle Kraus just made a joke and said, "Well, are you going to go ahead and buy the Walgreens next to take down every corner that is on the intersection?"
Oh, we do have some land behind there.
An actual historical summation of.
I know, this has been like seven or eight years, I think, in the process, I think.
If I remember correctly, we've got some land behind the Arby's over there.
There is.
I would suggest that, that Come and Go and the Krauses have made a lot of investments in Clive to get to this point, so that's very much appreciated, appreciated, and, and I think it's a great question. I think there's probably even some more science into the placement on which side of the street and, you know, traffic, when it's flowing, at what time of day, and when you get more customers and that sort of thing, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure some of.
There is, there is some science to that, so this is the better corner, yeah.
Yeah, good. Well, other questions related to that for, for our friends here?
Will this be one of your stores, I know you mentioned the square feet, Siobhan, will this be like similar to the Grand Prairie Parkway store out there?
Yeah, it will be, yep.
That's a nice one.
We've changed the prototype slightly, so the inside seating area is a little bit smaller than in that store, and we're not, you know, we're not doing the outdoor patios. They're, they're just not being used, used as much as we had hoped for, you know, but with Iowa, with the extreme cold and with the extreme heat, you know, again, they're just not being utilized.
Amanda, what's next?
All right. Thank you. I do have one more note, I guess, on the site plan that will come back on the supplemental agreement that I forgot to mention. We do have exterior ice and propane here wrapped around the side of the building, kind of behind the little wall, so it's less visible from the 156th Street or Hickman area, so that'll come back in the supplemental agreement. But we'll chat briefly on the public facility sign. You can see on the site, it's proposed to be here, it's kind of set back from the corner a bit due to some existing easements and utilities and the highway easement that's there. So here's their design they're proposing. It's fairly similar to what was constructed at Discount Tire, pulls in all the materials that we're used to seeing with the Edenstone and the cast stone caps, but it has the, the wall kind of goes behind, and then the actual monument sign portion, it kind of stands on its own in front. I mean, you see they've rendered some landscaping there, just as an example, that doesn't necessarily match exactly what's shown on the site plan, just for clarification. And the public facility sign is a requirement with Nebraska Furniture Mart's TIF agreement, so they had previously done a design, and then Come and Go wanted to readdress that. So at this time, they've landed on a, a sign that just features the city and does not provide any space for tenant signage, just due to some branding conflicts and trying to make it all mesh together, they felt that this was the best option for them, and staff is happy with the design as proposed. So if you guys have any comments or questions on that.
You said they're using the Weaver Stone.
It looks good.
Susan, any comments? I think it's a great-looking monument sign. It'll be a nice addition to that corner. Wanted something there for many years, and so I appreciate our friends at Come and Go, you know, coming forward with this design and, and, and not requiring, you know, the private brands to be, to be included in there, so.
Yeah, it's a really nice sign. I think it'll be great on the corner.
And just for the record, the other sign on 86th Street, the similar arrangement, just has that nice statue right in the middle of it, just saying.
Is this our responsibility to maintain, or is it?
I believe the TIF agreement lays out there'd be the property owner that would maintain the landscaping around it.
Questions?
Move approval of the site plan?
Second.
It's been moved by Eric, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Saying none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero.
I'd move approval of the public facility sign?
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by John. Further discussion? Saying none, will the council please vote? That passes five to zero.
And I'd move the resolution approving the supplemental agreement.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by John. Further discussion? Saying none, will the council please vote? And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Amanda, and thanks to all of you for coming tonight. Looking forward to getting started.
Thank you.
Know how we can be helpful. Okay, we'll move to item number six, which is a resolution authorizing and approving financing authority to Metro Waste Authority, a material recovery facility. Joyce?
Yes, Your Honor and Council.
Yes. Your honor and council members, this is the resolution due to the city being a member agency of the Metro Waste Authority, and they're, as we have heard through updates, they're beginning the construction of the material recovery facility. So, this is a state code requirement that as a member city, we're granting the authority, as you will, or approval for them to borrow the funding to construct the building. So, the resolution that we prepared for you, or that has been prepared for us to present to you, grants them the authority to borrow the funding for the recovery facility. Also, it will provide them the refunding for now or in the future. They have a, a outstanding taxable note, and then the authority to additional, issue additional indebtedness in the future. So, if you have any questions, or Councilmember Edwards, who is our representative on that board, who is probably very well-versed on this topic.
Councilmember, anything to add?
Yeah.
No.
Other than it's a good idea, maybe.
Can we get more of an explanation of what the facility does?
Well, the MRF, as it's, as it's known, I think you all have heard or are well-aware of the challenges in the recycling industry, and that you have to have, at this point in time, a facility that is updated and current to be able to process and then be able to market the materials. And so, with this MRF, we'll be able to control, that is Metro Waste Authority, will be able to control what's coming in and being able to market it, having a state-of-the-art facility with machinery that will be able to sort, process, and get the highest value possible from the recovered waste.
So, these recyclables, John, then, plastic, glass, natural metals?
Recycling, yep, yep.
That's not just a shiny new toy for the executive director to...
Some might describe it as such, but that would not be the terms I would use.
Well, these, I know there were some, and Mike, you can jump on this too. There were some, you know, Green Star and some of your competitors on this. We're not in favor of this facility, and I don't wish for competition argument or what have you. What's your thoughts on, what's your thoughts on that?
Okay, if I address it from here?
Yeah, you're not voting on it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I could speak on the outside too, or at the podium, but so some of that is, that is true. The current processor is struggling and having some issues, both materially wise and financially, as well as, you know, selling and being able to market the commodities. This is the fourth now time that it's changed ownership. The authority has some reservations that, of the sustainability of the facility, and it is the only one between here and Omaha, as well as from here to the, to Scott County. So, to, to provide that operation, they've made the decision to invest in what John described as that state-of-the-art. It will be the most state-of-the-art facility in the Midwest, minus one that's being built right now in Chicago by Waste Management, which will be, include the same technology, but more of it, right? So, it'll be the same technology, but larger. This should take us into what we decided 50 years ago on the landfill, it should do for recycling now, right? Where in all the cities came together and decided to build one landfill and partner in that for the sustainability of, of waste, they are now going to embark on that same philosophy with recycling. No doubt about it, the recycling market stinks. The business plan was tough to, the agency now, you know, the executive director, I require a business plan from staff to present any new program or redo of a current program. It shows clearly we will lose money. But right now, we're losing 1.4 million at recycling is our projection of what we're being charged by the current processor. Their fees went up 37% from an October 31st to a November 1st of last year. That is not sustainable, and they get a call the number because there is no other facility. So, I guess regard, if we put it out to the elected officials, the list of board, and said, "Do you want to continue to do recycling? And if you do, we believe it would be our recommendation to take it under your own name and know what you're going to lose is your, is your personal loss, right? And we can cover that and not an unknown loss." So, it is new for us to come to a resolution like this, and what it does is it adds the 10 million of the possible refunding of some old debt, that is taxable debt, and putting that into non-tax, tax-exempt lending. And then it's a kind of a WRA model of limiting us to a cap as well as debt. So, we're not continuously coming back, but a very conservatively safe number.
From a market perspective, I know one of the problems in the recycle industry is what, who do you sell it to? And the, the issues with the Asian market right there, not purchasing as much as they used to. What type of customer base you look at, and where do you go with it?
Yeah, that's interesting. So, we've been doing a lot of research on that, and actually was at a conference in Spain on this issue where we spoke, and where Metro Waste was a speaker for it. They kind of chuckled at us because we were beholden to China, and they have never been. Any of Europe does not, Australia does not rely on China at all for the sales. Their model is entirely different, and it's a model that we need to start pushing towards, and the board has, has prompted the staff to do, and that is your users are local, you're drawing in economic development, you're trying to build that around your plants, but also you're building relationships, which is what we're understanding is lacking from our current processor, those good tight relationships where we're not jumping because it changes a nickel or someone else's offering is $5 more. We have buyers that we lock into. We already have the buyers. We've been building this model for three years now. We've been selling cardboard for three years to buyers around the country, shipping it now at a, at a semi-loads full, rather than one and two bales that we were at the beginning. And so, that's, that is very successful. It is completely the opposite, which is interesting. They're lining up, buyers are lining up. I have a meeting with a buyer about every week wanting us to lock in to their, to providing the material to them. Again, it's not at the cost we want, right? But you just have to have that continued partnership and relationship where you go up and down together rather than... So, I think that's there, and it's going to be built, and I think it'll be built on this model of we're always going to be here, right? It's not going to be a new owner in a year or two years or five years. It'll be Metro that you're dealing with.
Final, final quick question, Mayor, if I could. Do you anticipate utilizing with your business model that new rail port that they're looking to build, anchoring somewhere with that facility right there in order to incorporate and get better transportation costs to increase margins?
It's quite possible that this facility, at this time, is going to be built in Grimes next to the salt storage building. It was chosen out of two of the last final locations, one downtown Des Moines off Martin Luther King, roughly, that had no rail support. This one has its own rail support. So, we will be able to put a rail spur into our location at some point, which there were two mills just built. That's the new thing as well, as China has blocked the American commodities. It's interesting, the largest Chinese buyer has now come over here and said, "The heck with the Chinese government. We will take over three mills here, redo them, and we'll buy straight from them, make the pulp into, anyways, make the pulp and basically ship it back to China because they can't buy our stuff. They still want it." So, those are three redone ones, two brand-new mills coming open in the Midwest, both have rail. So, I don't foresee us using that rail. That's downtown Des Moines that's being put in by MPO or some support.
Transload, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, transload. We don't foresee using that, but it's an option if we need it. We'll be shipping ourselves by truck and by rail eventually. Again, don't confuse anything I said with, "We're going to make money." I've been open with that from the beginning.
You're going to lose money.
We're going to lose money.
Not as much as you were.
We hope we can turn that around to a positive model.
Well, it sounds like you get some good opportunity in the future.
Well, and I think to, to, to maintain recycling service for our residents and for our businesses, which I think we have such great participation now, finally, took a number of years to do that, but the service got better. And now, if you can, if you can manage that quality with this facility and people, then that could be a game-changer, Matt.
I think to add to that, and I think, Michael, you would agree, that this could present an opportunity to enhance particularly business recycling that we aren't quite seeing at a level that we could see even higher in the future, even to go beyond residential recycling, just because the options aren't, are different for our commercial businesses than they are for the residential program that we, that we have and we control and our relationship with Metro Waste. That I think on the commercial side, there's even more opportunity. I don't think the current provider is, is taking advantage of that. I think when you have all the communities coming together and saying, "We're in this business, and we're in it for the long term," that, that can be a signal to the business community, working with folks like the Greater Des Moines Partnership, Chamber of Commerce is in the metro area, that we can now take the commercial recycling to another level.
Come and Go is one that has approached us, Hy-Vee has approached us, and as far away as Omaha has asked us to bid on their processing. So, it's all positive, and it's going to be built on volume, pure volume. And again, no bones about, we're not going to apologize once we open up. We're open for everybody. We're open for commercial. We're open for residential. We're open for any recycling that will come through our facility.
Just a couple of other quick points to be made, that is, the facility, when it opens, will be state-of-the-art. But in order to keep that, it'll have to be upgraded every few years to take advantage of the latest technology, and that's incorporated into the planning process. So, it's not going to become a stale, out-of-date facility. It's going to be constantly updating so that we can capture the commercial and the other...
What's the anticipated opening, do we...
October 2021.
So, we got ways. But Michael mentioned the 37% increase. This wasn't the first time. This, you know, we'd been locked into a contract for a number of years, and every year they came back. And again, they were the only game in town, so they have...
Like Des Moines Water Works.
Well, and I think for this, if I may, your honor, for this council's benefit, you know, when we had the discussion about the change in the solid waste rate, that kerbit rate increase was driven by this provider, by this supplier. So, you know, we're, our, you know, if we're able to mitigate some of those losses and maybe even see a benefit over time, I think ultimately everybody wins, including our, our residents, because that might be able to help, have us have some stability in that rate over the long term versus not having really little to no control of it. I mean, Metro Waste has actually been absorbing some of those increases, and now it got to the point where it had to be passed along. And I know we talked about that in the last year's budget process when we adjusted the solid waste rate, but I think this is, could mean a lot in terms of how that rate is, looks in the future.
So, McCoy is guaranteeing drastic rate reductions, so...
I didn't say that.
I didn't hear that.
He says, "I guarantee we're going to lose money right from the beginning." I just wanted that, and I hope I surprise you.
Be more clear.
I hope I surprise you.
Can you say that again?
Setting expectations.
That's right, it is.
Setting expectations.
Under promise, over delivered, right?
That's right.
Well, I move the resolution.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Susan, anything on your end on this item?
No, it's been an interesting discussion. Thanks.
Mayor, I'll be abstaining.
Very good, thank you. Saying no further discussion, will the council please vote? And that passes with four in favor, one abstention. Thank you. And Joyce, thank you for that. Okay, item seven is...
Move approval. Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion?
I'll be abstaining, your honor.
Thank you, Susan. Saying nothing further, will the council please vote? And that's four with one abstention. Thank you. Item eight?
Move approval. Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Ted. Further discussion?
I'll be abstaining again, your honor.
Thank you, Susan. Saying nothing further, will the council please vote? And that passes four in favor with one abstention. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to reports. Pete, we'll start with you.
Thank you, your honor. Earlier tonight, I dropped off a little slip of paper with some instructions on the email migration that's happening, starting tonight at 11:30. If at any point any of you are having trouble either with getting those emails forwarded to your preferred account, or just getting things connected with the, as you're getting into that space, just give me a phone call, and Dennis and I will be happy to walk you through. And if we need to get our hands on one of your devices, so we can make sure everything's set up as well, we're happy to do that. The police department recruiting campaign is up and running right now, and there'll be additional steps that we take as we get closer to March and into the, into the spring.
Pete, on that real quick, I noticed that Des Moines was launching a very aggressive recruiting program as well, chief. I heard Sergeant Paul Perijak on the news this morning as well. So, you know, I don't know if there's something in the water there, all the, all the departments are recruiting at the same time, or...
Yeah, we're, we're in a lot of competition. We, yesterday, we were at Job Fair at ISU. Des Moines was there. West Des Moines was there. I think I heard Altoona was there. Houston Police Department was there. I mean, Houston and Dallas come up and recruit Midwest people a lot, so...
Really?
Yeah, it is a, it's a competitive market, and we're hoping, working with, that we can get our, our name out there and the fact that we feel we're, we're a little bit different. And we're, we're hoping to give employees a different employment experience here.
I think the 410s are going to help you quite a bit.
Hopefully that helps.
Pete, thank you, chief.
We'll keep everybody updated on the success of our campaign and what we need to do to keep building up that great list of applicants. Tomorrow, we are going to officially cut the ribbon on the new website. And so, to kind of continue, we couldn't have done the police recruiting campaign the way that we have but for having the new website in place, which is a place where we can really feature a video better than we had been able to in the past, and pair it with a lot of other good information and give people a good, rich digital experience, especially with things like the online form that people now fill out when they're sending in their materials. And I compliment the chief and Roxanne and Dennis especially. They've done a great job giving people a more modern, 21st century job application experience than what we were previously able to offer. So, I'm excited about the chance to, to cut that ribbon, and I want to thank everybody across all the departments who gave so much time to that process over the last 12 months. It's been a long time building this, but we've built something that really is going to help us deliver services for the city very well. We had seven responses for the Water Resources Master Plan to the RFQ, and we are in the process of evaluating those. The staff committee will be looking at those and then extending opportunities to finalists here next week. And then, when we move into the finalist round, we'll be bringing in some of our past partners. We already have a commitment from ISWEP, their executive director, to be a part of that evaluation team. Councilman Weaver has agreed to be a part of that as well, which we appreciate. We're also going to approach some of our partners at Polk County Soil and Water, and also at the Nature Conservancy to see if they would like to be a part of that as well. Finally, we are on schedule for a March deployment of the Citizen Satisfaction Survey, which will also be our deployment for our new online tool as well, where we'll be able to gather some of those responses and then start using that group of people who respond online as a team, a bench, that we can go back to frequently with other questions that we have throughout the year. The survey questions look very similar. The core questions look very similar to what they have in the past. For our special section this year, we've narrowed in, Matt and I, with discussions with other people on staff, we've narrowed in on water questions. So, some of those will have to do potentially with how people use water inside their home and water conservation or water stewardship, but also thinking about things that they do outside their home for water stewardship as well, and how they feel about the city's role in helping facilitate some of that good stewardship in the future.
Standing, Pete. Counsel, questions for Pete? Thank you, Pete. Ted?
I have nothing tonight.
Eric?
Nothing.
John?
Thank you.
Michael?
I have nothing.
Madam Counsel?
No.
Matt, we're down to you.
Susan?
Susan, forgive me. Do you have anything to report for the council?
I do not, thank you.
What's the temperature where you are, Susan?
It's been up for...
It's been upper 70s today.
It's about 70.
Sorry, I asked.
That's enough of Susan.
How poofy right?
Matt?
Brutal.
Just a couple of things. Earlier today and yesterday, want to thank Councilmember Edwards for his time and serving on the District One review of the consultant proposals that we see for that neighborhood planning effort. I think we've narrowed it down to a couple, maybe one, that we're doing some reference checks on, and that will be coming forward as a recommendation, likely your first meeting in March. But appreciate Councilmember Edwards' time. That was a lot of time to sit through interviews, so appreciate that. And then also, I know we've talked about regional water every now and then. Another meeting is coming in a couple of weeks, two weeks from today. So hopefully, maybe I'll have something more to report at the next council meeting in terms of moving the conversation along. There is, we're now getting to a point where there's acknowledgement from all entities that decisions need to be made here in the short term of who's in and who's out, likely by this spring. And so we're doing some additional analysis. We have PFM running some numbers of kind of comparing our own cash flow to what is being proposed as a part of the regional model, so we can have some comparisons. And so my hope is to bring those two things together, along with the discussions, kind of back to you all, because there likely will be some kind of decision point or direction that I will need at some point in the next couple of months of, you know, whether we're in or out in those conversations. So more to come on that. That's all I have, your honor.
Questions for Madam Counsel? Matt, thank you. Matthew, any correspondence?
Nothing further.
Counsel, anything for the good of the order? Saying nothing further, we're going to adjourn at 7:11.